Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Councilmember Daye.
Here.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Present.
Councilmember Fitch.
Here.
Councilmember Gray.
Present.
Councilmember Clancy.
Here.
Councilmember Trachis.
Present.
Councilmember Harder.
Here.
Madam Chair, we have a quorum.
Is there a motion for approval of the Journal of the Meeting of February 18th, 2020?
Some of them.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The February 18th, 2020 Journal is approved. Is there a motion for approval of the Journal of the Meeting of February 25th, 2020?
Some moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The February 25th, 2020 Journal is approved. We have no bid openings this evening, so we will move to communications.
Madam Chair, we have no tax compromises. It's only matters this evening, so we will move to road and bridge matters. Under road and bridge matters, item number one, all districts.
Receive and file, and that will be the order.
Moving on to other communications, item number one, 6th District.
Receive, file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, please.
So ordered.
Item number two, 7th District.
Receive, file, and refer to the county councilor, the Department of Planning, the Department of Transportation and Public Works, the Department of Revenue, the Assessors Office, and the Board of Election Commissioners.
So ordered.
Item number three.
Receive and file, same motion for item number four, and that will be the order.
Item number five, 4th District.
Hold on to our business.
So ordered.
Item number six, 4th District.
Receive, file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number seven, 2nd District.
We are going to hold this request for one more week while we finalize our substitute bill number two. So ordered. And then, Madam Chairman, Gray, did you have?
Yes, I'll, we can go ahead and receive and file even if we present it next week, correct? Five, number five.
You can order legislation and then?
Okay, so let's go ahead and receive and file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. Legislation.
So ordered. Thank you.
Item number eight.
Receive and file, and that will be the order.
Item number nine.
Receive, file, and the appropriation transfer of 83,000 be approved as requested. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number 10.
Receive, file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item number 11.
Receive, file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Madam Chair, just a point of order on number 11. I believe there's a typo in there. It should be St. Louis City Police Officers Association, is that correct? Is that right? Do you know? Maybe they?
I am not sure. Is there someone?
I believe. I believe the City Police Officers Association are the ones representing the office of prosecutor
attorney, not the County Police Officers Association. I think he's right about that.
I can go get the communication that goes with it to verify.
Well, I can look at that myself as well.
You have it.
The communication does read St. Louis County Police Officers Association.
Who's it from?
County Council, County Executive's Office.
I think that's wrong. Is the, is there anybody here from the police association? It's wrong? Okay.
Maybe it's in the county councilor's letter as well.
So does that need to be corrected?
Are we certain that's what it is?
Can you just order it as amended?
Can we, if it needs to be corrected, could we order as amended?
It's the motion to, the legislation will be for the case that it is the St. Louis City Police Officers Association versus St. Louis County, 20SL-CC00272.
So I would like to receive, file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation as amended to correct we reflect that it is the St. Louis City Police Officers Association.
Yes, ma'am.
And that will be the order.
Item number 12.
Receive, file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item number 13, 2nd District.
Receive, file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. So ordered.
Item number 14.
Receive, file, and the appointment be approved as recommended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, and that will be, motion carries.
Item number 15.
Receive and file, and that will be the order.
Item number 16.
Receive and file, and that will be the order. There are no add-ons tonight. We will proceed with the report of the county executive.
Thank you, Lisa, and good evening, everyone. This brings, Schmidt, our acting director of the Health Department, just briefed the council on the work the county is doing to prepare for the coronavirus. As I said in a message to county employees yesterday, this is a serious challenge. But our public health professionals are prepared, and our region's top experts are working together to make sure that we are ready when the coronavirus arrives in St. Louis. It's a priority of my administration to make sure that we provide as much accurate and reliable information as possible, and we must always keep things in perspective. This is not a reason to panic. Today, we created a website, STLcorona.com, an easy way for the public to get the latest updates on the virus and the steps that we can take to stay well. In addition, the county has set up a hotline through the Health Department. That number is 314-615-2660. Language assistance is available. The role of the county is threefold. First, we will prepare. We are monitoring the status of the outbreak around the globe, but also here in our community. There are no cases in St. Louis, and in fact, there aren't any in Missouri. The closest one is Chicago. But we know that new cases are being confirmed every day, and we will continue to provide regular updates. Our role is also to educate. We will regularly provide reliable and accurate information to the public and use our website and social media as ways to communicate. I will also be holding press conferences as new information develops. We will respond. We will strategically activate our resources when needed and collaborate with our regional partners to fight the outbreak. We will deliver the resources to those who need them as quickly as possible. The best thing we can do in this setting is to prevent illness. Like the flu, the tried and true ways of to avoid getting sick are these. Wash your hands with soap and water. Use hand sanitizer if soap and water isn't available. Avoid touching your eyes or your nose or your mouth with unwashed hands. Cover your mouth when you cough or sneeze. And avoid contact with people who are sick. And if you get sick, stay home. Take care of yourself and avoid close contact with others. Finally, I'd like to share with you a statement that we made to the press yesterday regarding Prop P. Prop P was passed to ensure that our police officers and other public safety staff get the raises that they deserve, so we can effectively retain and recruit officers to keep St. Louis County safe. This was the intent when the voters passed it. They didn't pass it to create a large reserve. The Budget Office reviewed the simmer collective bargaining agreement and developed a cost estimate back in October. That analysis was shared with the county executive's office. In future years, the commissioned officer CBA does affect the fund balance. We want to work with the council to minimize the impact. As a budget authority for the county, I encourage all of you to continue asking questions about Prop P and other revenue sources, and as a former member of the council, I understand that you get a lot of bills coming in your direction. We are here to work together. That's the expectation of the public. Thanks for all of your efforts. Thank you, Lisa. That's all I have.
Thank you. We will now move into the public forum of our agenda. Let's keep at the forefront of our minds tonight that each week we all have an opportunity together to be an example to our community and beyond about what a participatory government can look like at its best. As we move into the public forum portion of our meeting this evening, I want to take a moment to go over some of the rules that we are obligated to follow. First, our council rules mandate that each public speaker will be allowed three minutes to speak. You are being timed, and the clerk will let you know when your time is up. Second, our rules state that the chair of the council shall preserve decorum and order in the chamber both during the public forum and throughout our council meeting. This means that during public forum, all comments from the speaker are directed only to the chair. This also means that the chair presides over the meeting and ensures that neither members of the audience, nor a speaker during public forum, nor council members shall take action to disrupt the meeting body. Such actions can include clapping, shouting, displaying a threat, or making remarks when you have not been recognized to speak. If you violate this request, you will be warned and you may later be escorted out. Finally, this county council has been completing important business that addresses our region's priorities, from affordable housing to public safety to transportation, to workforce and economic development, just to name a few. These are, these are things we should all be proud of. These issues aren't always ones in which everyone agrees on the solutions, and that's healthy. And yet, but, we will continue to tackle these big policy issues. The people of St. Louis County deserve no less from us. With that, I expect every person here tonight to act and speak with tolerance towards the others who are present, even in times of a heated difference in opinion. Keep in mind that the First Amendment protects speech that persuades, but not speech in which entices. The rest of the council and I look forward to hearing your remarks tonight during the public forum. This evening, we have 14 speakers, and with that, Madam, Madam Clerk, please call the first speaker.
First speaker, Alex Lee.
Good evening. IC Solutions has not responded over the last several weeks, while county executive Sam Page and others in his, in his administration made unsubstantiated attacks against our company, even though we were ultimately proven right that the blatant errors in the procurement process made the selection of Securus for the ITS RFP unfair. We are here tonight to respond to those claims today to clear our good name. First, we wanted to address the allegations that IC Solutions provided poor service. This is a lie. Since we won the contract in 2008, there have been no system outages. We have not received a single notice of noncompliance or contract failure. We have never received any facility complaints or allegations of poor service. Dr. Page alleged that IC Solutions is under investigation for potentially violating the cone of silence. IC Solutions has only sought to bring to light the blatant errors that occurred in the procurement process. We find it completely disingenuous by the county executive's office to talk about the violations of the cone of silence when his own spokesman and others in county government provided statements on January 31st to St. Louis Public Radio and other media outlets about the new phone contract and raved about the tablets that the inmates would be getting. Dr. Page referred to us as profiteers and predatory. We would respond that the contracts that IC Solutions has served under were properly negotiated and entered into by both IC Solutions and the county. It is extremely important to note that no one has made more money on these contracts than St. Louis County itself. Dr. Page proudly brought up that the prison policy initiative praised St. Louis County's ITS RFP. He probably should have looked into the fact that the prison policy initiative and what they have specifically said about Securus, the company he tried to force through. The prison policy initiative in a 2015 article said specifically, "Securus exemplifies the industry's obscene penchant for squeezing profits by fleecing their customers and shorting their business partners." There are many other articles similar to this by the prison policy initiative. I am here tonight to request that the council, instead of throwing out the whole RFP for inmate telephone services, consider saving the St. Louis County taxpayers, the inmates and their families, the most money, and award the inmate telephone contract to IC Solutions, the company that offered the lowest rates. If it decides to proceed with the RFP, the council needs to investigate what happened here. The saying goes, "Once is an accident, twice is a coincidence, three times is a pattern." There were at least four blatant errors in the administration of this RFP. That combined with the fact that the chief of staff for the county executive was a registered lobbyist for Securus, and all of the other circumstances taken in totality, and you look at it, and it all smacks of, or feels similar to what transpired under the Steve Stenger administration.
Madam Chair, there's three minutes.
Please finish your remarks.
I will. We will be making a sunshine remark, or sunshine request for documents to find out exactly what happened, but we do not believe this RFP should come back out until the root cause for what happened is fixed. Thank you for your time.
Madam Chair, may I inquire? May I inquire, Mr. Lee, if you have a moment, please? If I'm not mistaken, didn't you directly communicate by electronic mail with every member of this body prior to the award of the contract?
What we did was we put together a email with a letter and also CCing the clerk to raise the issues that were brought up, as we did in our letter, that were problematic with the RFP.
Is that a yes? Answer to my question?
I answered your question.
Is that a yes? In other words?
Yes, we emailed, yes, we did.
And you weren't the only one. In fact, I believe your CEO sent an email as well, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Now, you've asked for an investigation. You certainly wouldn't have a problem with the council or its ethics committee investigating your company as to whether or not you violated the code of silence with those electronic communications and perhaps telephonic communications, would you?
I would have no problems with the county investigating the totality of the circumstances surrounding the RFP, its administration, and the errors surrounding it. I would have no problems with that.
But my question goes to whether or not IC Solutions would have a problem with the county, with the council's ethics committee, or the council as a whole, investigating whether or not your company violated the cone of silence in trying to lobby or influence the members of the council.
I would say that we deny any such thing of a violation of the cone of silence.
But my question is, would you welcome an investigation or not?
We would, again, welcome any investigation related to this RFP, its administration, and all the errors surrounding it.
Including IC Solutions' violation of the code of silence, right?
I can't speak to whether it did or not.
Okay, well, we'll be in touch.
We will.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Next speaker, Rachel Major.
Good evening. I am Rachel Major. I'm the representative for the police staff for the St. Louis County Police Department. As mentioned previously, the police staff is a pretty vague term that includes a variety of people. One of the largest groups represented is staff, are the 911 dispatchers. That position is one of the most critical positions within a police agency, and the value placed on that bureau is the true test of how strong a police agency is. Let's be honest, the word valuable has become a question of how much money do you think they're worth? How much money to make sure that the person that you call on your worst day is the best our money can afford? Because the term you get what you pay for has been a determining factor in the quality of our 911 center for quite some time. Does there need to be scrutiny with Prop P spending? Yes, we have all made that pretty crystal clear. There certainly needs to be some significant improvement to tracking the spending, but I find it pretty remarkable that there's an honest belief that the budget director seemed to have pulled a fast one on the council. Do any of you believe that he knew that Prop P funds were being overspent and just didn't say anything when the officer CBA was presented? He had our contract before he had the officers. He knew exactly how much each of them would cost in October. The officer CBA was presented to you, and ours was not. The more expensive of the two was passed along with recommendations and moms the word. Do you honestly think that was a mistake? Maybe it was just another attempt to push aside the staff. One more example, the women I represent being given a pat on the head with assurance that they're trying their best, but it just isn't working out. Less than a month after the officer contract was approved, I'm told we are now in dire straits and desperate, desperate financial straits. The impressions of gee, we're sorry are spoken from one hand, all the while the council's being asked to spend millions on computers with the other. As much as I hate to point this out, police work can be done without computers. It cannot be done without dispatchers. So again, how valuable is the ability to know that your 911 call will be answered without delay and handled by the best in the entire area? I'll throw my computer in the garbage and never look back if that's what it takes to get my people fair and equitable. Good news is the reason the budget office didn't hold up the officer CBA is because the doom and gloom predictions, in my belief, are merely a red flag to slow down and stop spending money like we've won the lottery. He knows that we can afford this contract, and I know how to read payroll, budget, and expense reports. Letting in securities planted by others with questionable motives affecting your approval of the staff CBA would be a failure. You would be failing the staff, the officers, and the public that we all serve. Failure now will ultimately result in the compromise of the entire community's safety. We have the funds to afford this contract. We can afford to invest in a strong police department with the staff. Without fair labor practices and equitable pay, the quality of the 911 center will continue to be compromised, and the person on the other end of that call on your worst day will be one of the most neglected 911 call takers in the area. Thank you.
Next speaker, Tom Sullivan.
Madam Chair, I do not think the council should proceed with the convention center expansion bill with so many unanswered questions. If recent events have taught anything, it's that you should know what you're voting on. Members of most legislative bodies realize that's a basic responsibility, but not the members of this council. Anyone reading today's Post Dispatch story about Proposition P might wonder, what on earth is going on in county government? This comes after the screw-up with the jail contract. I cannot remember a time when county government was so incompetent. Last week, I said many bad decisions along with misplaced priorities by county government has caused so many people, jobs, and revenue to leave St. Louis County. This was confirmed by a big story in the Sunday paper about all the growth in the outer regions in this area. St. Louis County is losing the competition to attract residents. Proving $240 million toward another boondoggle in downtown St. Louis won't help. The revenue would be better spent meeting so many unmet needs in St. Louis County. I would like to mention again that the expanded convention center would be financed by appropriation bonds, and that initiative petition, similar to the one that prohibited public funds for support stadiums without voter approval, could cause a diversion of the funds. The lawyer from Armstrong Teasdale agreed with me at yesterday's committee meeting. That is a risk that bond buyers in St. Louis County will have to take. How did it happen that baseball stadiums, football stadiums, and convention centers came to be seen as public infrastructure, the same as government buildings, our bridges or roads? The answer, bought off politicians. Last year was surprising that Councilwoman Hazel Irby would sponsor the bill for the convention center expansion when her district has the most impoverished cities in the area. But she did get a bunch of campaign contributions from supporters of the convention center expansion. So did you, Ms. Clancy, and so has the county executive. After turning her back on her community, Councilwoman Irby did get some roses from Kitty Radcliffe. As a bill sponsor this time, Ms. Clancy, you should also expect some roses from Kitty. There should be a note with the flowers that says something like this. Dear Lisa, thank you so much for supporting our latest boondoggle while ignoring so many needs of the people in St. Louis County. You can expect even more campaign contributions. Best wishes, Kitty. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Next speaker, Suzanne Collier.
Down here, ma'am.
To the clerk, please. Ma'am.
Good evening. This is new for me, and I'm scared. But anyway, if you would pass those pictures, I'm here to do with a neighbor on Problem Properties that I have dealt with for probably 10 years of a mess, a junkyard, and my family is very afraid for me because of the way that he lives and the way that he has people coming around all the time. I call the police department at least four times a week due to this gentleman because he's not allowed on his property. After contacting numerous departments in St. Louis County, which I have a list here, trying to get something done, the office of Ernie Trachis and his, and his office finally stepped up to do something. First, the gentleman next to me dug a huge hole trying to get to pipes, and the kids walking down the street could have fallen in it. So Trachis' office and Ernie Trachis, they fixed that right away. Then we got Officer Rink from Problem Properties to step in and help. He, after viewing the property, after going inside and doing what he did, vacate order on the premises. The property has been condemned. St. Louis County, after months of giving the neighbor time to clean up, which he didn't, came in and removed at least 95% of what was in his yard. Not, he didn't like that very much. Officer Rink has been very instrumental in keeping up with, with what is our next step as neighbors on this property. He has been very respectful even to this gentleman, giving him his phone number and saying, if you need to know what you can and cannot do on your property, to please call me, which this gentleman will not do. Without Officer Rink and Ernie Trankens, Ernie Trachis, nothing would have been done so far. Being a taxpayer citizen and abiding by the law, I'm appalled that I should have to live my retired life in fear and with this property next door. Never being able to open my windows because this man burns morning, noon, and night, which I called the police about, constantly nervous, as you can see right now. Officer Rink of Problem Properties has a job to do, and my neighbors and I praise him for all the effort and time he has done to help keep our neighborhood clean. Also, hopefully, the police will keep our neighborhood safe and continue doing their job also. Thank you.
Next speaker, Patricia Stroh.
My name's Patricia Stroh, and I am also a neighbor of this Problem Property. And I would first like to thank Ernie Trachis for helping us. I've been trying to do something about this for four years, and it's far worse than you can imagine. I mean, we've watched him rip all the siding off his house and burn it, you know, have an illegal burn operation going on. We're landscaping trucks one after another, was dropping debris often, it was burning, and there are just several issues that cause us not to be able to let our grandchildren go out and play, which, you know, you want to have children in the neighborhood be able to go out and play and enjoy your yard. We haven't even used our yard in three years. This will be the fourth year. And it's kind of unbearable because there's other issues, like he will go onto your property and cause damage. He kind of stalks you and waits for you to leave and will literally go onto your property. He's gone onto people's property, taking their ladders, taking their lawn mowers. I mean, there's issues, and they're being dealt with. But I felt extremely hopeless. I just want to live in peace, and we care very much about our neighborhood. And Ernie is the first one who stepped up and made me feel like he cared about keeping our neighborhood a neighborhood. I mean, the people in our area don't have a lot of money, but our kids grew up together, and now they have kids. It means a lot to us, you know? We just want to keep it a neighborhood. We don't want people doing illegal activities. I mean, I've had incident of having my grandchildren in the yard, and all of a sudden, a fight would break out with people that this gentleman was associated with right on the other side of my fence, people diving in the back of pickup trucks, and I got babies out there, you know? And, and I would start not being able to take the babies out, and that's not fair, you know? I just really want to thank you, Mr. Trachis, for showing me, giving me hope that you understand what keeping our neighborhood safe, how important it is to us. It really is, you know? We don't have a lot of money, but we have our neighborhoods, you know, that we've been in for years and years, and we care about them. The other thing I'd like to address, I have compassion for people with problems. I've had problems in my life. Even if I see somebody that's panhandling, I think, boy, for you to be in that position, that's a very lost must, you're, you're pretty lost. You need help. But when it becomes an issue of safety, running businesses out of the area, you know, people not wanting to go shopping in the area, because not all of it is just people needing money because they're down and out, it's starting to become clearly, I would call it hustling. I mean, in the 55 Bayless area, there's a strip mall there where the Goodwill is, I don't know if you are familiar with that area. But even last time I went to get a haircut, I could get, I, I just wanted to just do a little shop and get away and get my hair trimmed, and I can almost never go in that area anymore.
Madam Chair, that's three minutes. Please wrap up, ma'am.
Shoot, okay. Well, I'm sorry that didn't work out, but I hope that can be resolved.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Clancy. Next speaker, Christine Hessel.
Thank you for the opportunity to address the council. In 2017, St. Louis County voters overwhelmingly passed Proposition P because they agreed that our police were badly underpaid. According to the Post Dispatch, county officials have committed to spend too much and are creating deficits that will burn through a $20 million balance by 2023. Amazing. Those who opposed this tax increase did so because they felt that the vague wording of this proposition would lead to irresponsible spending on items other than police salaries. Their cynicism was based on past experience with politicians like Steve Stanger, who happens to be serving a federal prison sentence for his dishonesty. I'm frankly disgusted with this situation. After attending meetings on a weekly basis, I've witnessed several important legitimate questions raised regarding the expenditure of taxpayer money or the impact of proposed legislation. These questions have been dismissed and votes promptly rushed through. On top of that, the chairwoman alleged sexist intentions behind these questions. This cheap shot only underscored the lack of professionalism and respect that she holds for anyone with a different opinion. The people on this council who dare to ask such questions have been elected by tax-paying voters who expect a transparent, honest government that is a good steward of public money. These councilmen take their job seriously, and they deserve better than the lack of respect and cooperation that they've been getting. In 2018, 75% of Republican voters in St. Louis County crossed party lines to vote in the Democrat primary for county executive. They did so for pragmatic reasons. They wanted someone more honest than Steve Stanger. If past history is a predictor of the 2020 primary, they will be doing so again for the same reason. This time, it will be to unseat Sam Page. Thank you.
Next speaker, Chris Strachoff.
Good evening. My name is Chris Strachoff, and I live in South County. I came here tonight because I read a recent article in the Post Dispatch regarding the sharp split on the county council. I live in District 3, the district that Councilman Tim Fitch represents, and I must say, I'm happy with his work on the council. In the article in the Post Dispatch, Councilwoman Clancy accused the three Republican council members of sexism because they interrupted her at the meeting. False accusations and headlines seem to be the norm these days without facts. To me, the facts are, there are four Democrat women on the council, which Councilwoman Clancy has referred to as the Squad on social media. It seems to me these four Democrat women have ganged up against the three Republican men. Maybe the action of these Democrat women should be called sexism. In the past council meetings that I have attended and watched on YouTube, there were many interruptions. I remember Councilwoman Hazel Irby and Council Executive Stanger going at it, with Hazel asking him why he even came to the meeting anyway. I remember Democrat Council Executive Stanger attempting to get Representative Ernie Tracus removed from the office because Stanger felt threatened by Tracus' honesty and work on the council. In fact, when Stanger was arrested, it was, he claimed that it was all because of Ernie Tracus. I remember Democrat Council Executive Dooley and all that went on during his reign and the dump Dooley signs on trash cans in my neighborhood, because these appeared to be something, because there appeared to be something shady going on regarding canceling contracts with trash haulers. That move cost the county a lot of money. County Executive Stanger got elected by claiming he would bring back transparency and/or honesty. However, he then lost his position as county executive for reasons that included pay-to-play. No wonder Tim Fitch asked the very reasonable question of a Keodini architectural firm who wanted a contract in Tim Fitch's district, my district. The question was, that was asked was, have you had any recent contributions to County Executive Sam Page's campaign? The architectural firm refused to answer this reasonable question, and wisely, Fitch put the contract on hold until he got an answer. Chairwoman Clancy had to intervene. She took the bill from Fitch and pushed the project through, saying that his concern was unfounded because the county voters had voted a charter amendment prohibiting any donations to a campaign 90 days before contract bids are solicited on 90 days after the contract. I'll be finishing in a second, thank you. St. Louis County government has a bad record with the past two Democrat council executives, and is not wrong to ask those seeking contracts with the county if they had made any recent donations to present county executive's campaign. In fact, I feel it is a compliment.
Strachoff, your time is up. A minute, could you leave the podium, please? Thank you. Next speaker.
Why did Chairman Clancy intervene? Is there something to hide?
Next speaker, Greg Porter. I need to remind everyone of the rules that I stated at the beginning of the meeting. There will be no applause, please.
Good evening, members of the council. My name is Greg Porter, Number 6, Crookham Court, Florence, Missouri, 63033, unincorporated, North St. Louis County, District 4. I'm the President and Secretary of the Padoc Forest Residents Association Incorporated and the Chairman of the North St. Louis County Problem Solving Committee. As you probably know, I don't attend many council meetings, but I watch them all, either livestream or online. However, I did attend the first council meeting this year because I was very concerned as to who was going to be elected council chair. Fortunately, what I feared did not happen. But I don't like what I'm seeing when I watch the proceedings of these council meetings. At last week's council meeting, the situation on the council turned divisive, with the county clearly split along party lines instead of working together when Steve Stinger was a common enemy. This contentious rift is being led by Chairwoman Lisa Clancy, thus in, in watching the council meetings this year, you were in full command by the third week, thus sending a clear message to the three Republican men on the council that there's a new sheriff in town. When Dr. Sam Page was the council chair and Ernie Tracus was the presiding officer, they treated everyone on the council with respect and dignity and did not limit discussion regardless of political party affiliation. That is not the case with you, as you are trying to rush through the agenda and limit discussion while pushing your own agenda. I suggest that you try to work to compromise with your minority party council members because it's in the best interest of the council as a legislative body. I also don't like what I see with the county executive. I think things started out well when Dr. Page was elected by a county executive by his peers on the council. But after watching for several months now, I see similarities to the Stinger administration. For example, transparency issues, withholding information from the council, and patronizing jobs, like helping Tony Weaver get a job at the jail, to name a few. Also, every week, the county executive has a report, which is a good thing, unlike when Stinger was county executive. But every week, it's akin to a President Roosevelt fireside chat and campaign rhetoric about all the great things that he's doing for the county. Even though it's an election year, I think that Dr. Page needs to realize that he can't be everyone's candidate, so sometimes one has to get off the fence and take a stand. Thank you. I'm going to leave a copy of my written comments with it.
Next speaker, Donna Slummer.
Good evening, Donna Slummer, St. Louis County. You should be tired of us talking about your county animal shelter almost every week, but you probably aren't. You probably couldn't care one way or the other, because whether we come here or not, you still have to sit there. Whether you listen or not, do something or not, you still have to sit there. When speakers are done, they're done. You got that part over with, but what do you do afterwards? Well, since the same issues are spoken about every week in public forum, it looks like you must not be doing much. Trust me, we wish we didn't feel the need to be here, but until it's fixed, we won't go away. Today, I'm coming here as a concerned taxpayer, more so than an animal lover, because until you get a qualified director that supports the staff and volunteers, one that doesn't come to work late daily to hide in her office, one that can show she wants what's best for the animals, and one that we actually see and hear sometimes, my tax dollars are being wasted. Wasted on someone that didn't even meet the minimum qualifications for the position from the beginning. She can't do the job when she was never qualified to do it in the first place, so she hides in her, she hides her inexperience in the office while the rest of the staff and the volunteers work their asses off. Not one of you has answered why she was selected for the position after numerous speakers have inquired. You listen to what the Health Department tells you, disregarding the hidden agendas and conspiracies, you disregard the nepotism, and you don't investigate or seem to care. Seems like we know more than you do. There are positive changes, but there is a lot remaining to be fixed. Imagine if there was teamwork instead of corruption. I'd also, I'd also like to ask why my tax dollars are paying $100 an hour to a consultant that hasn't set foot in the shelter? But yet is putting, pushing for privatization, and I wonder why? What does she and others have to gain? Did you know a representative of Best Friends was told they were no longer welcome at the shelter as a network partner? This is the consultant you wish to take advice from on how to improve conditions? It seems that she also may be giving friends and friends in certain organizations an advantage on the bidding process for privatization before it has even been released. Yeah, we know about the politics. Have you already decided, have you already decided on the shelter's fate? For God's sake, can you let the staff know if they need to be looking for other jobs instead of continuing to let this loom over their heads? Are we going to repeat the fiasco with the phone contract for the jail? Our request from one day, our request from the first day hasn't changed. Listen to the staff.
Madam Chair, that's three minutes.
And the volunteers that are making positive changes and ask them what is needed. They are the only ones that know. I'd also like to ask my tax dollars be spent where needed, hiring full-time vets to get animals spayed and neutered so they can go home. Who is in charge of this fiasco, and why, why is it continuing?
Next speaker, Xena Hackworth.
I have been coming to these meetings for the past several weeks, and I've noticed that we have a person who is a chairperson, who is the most unprofessional that I have ever seen on this council. I noticed that she says you need to address the chair, but when anyone is addressing her and she doesn't like what they have to say, she is watching the clock and, and, and looking down and doing something else and watching the clock, ignoring the people who she does not agree with. If you look back at the videos, I'm sure you can see that. She has different standards for different people, different standards for men and women. She believes that men do not have the right to speak up, but the women can, according to her, she, and perhaps her squad. She has different standards for black and white. Someone came up here and spoke a few weeks ago, and she said, and they, they asked her a question, and she says, we are not to engage with the public, that this is a public forum, and they're not to say anything. White person, black person, me, get up and say something, talking last week, and she decided to interrupt me, which she wasn't supposed to do. And according to her standards, when, with this, this newspaper article with the, with the Post Dispatch calling the men sexist, really? According to your, because they, because they interrupted you? Well, they have a right to interrupt. I want to hear what the men have to say. This is not just for the women to speak. I am a citizen of St. Louis County, and I want to hear what everyone has to say, not just what the people who you agree with want to have, want to have to say. So according to your standards, being interrupted because they interrupted you, they are sexist. Well, because you interrupted me, you must be racist, because if you want to, you can't have double standards, which you do. And if all we have to do is look back through all the tapes that's out there, all the recordings, you have double standards. You sit and you listen intently to the people who say what you want them to say, but you want to get everybody offstage. And yes, I am pro-life, and I'm going to keep saying that I'm pro-life. So I think that you need to learn the definition of professionalism. You want to lecture everyone, but you do not have it. You do not have professionalism, and you need to learn what it is. How you became the county council district chairwoman, I have no idea. I have no idea. That is a position you honestly do not deserve. And if you really want to be, be professional, you should probably just step down until you put your good big-girl panties on and learn how to address the people and the people on the council.
Your time is up, Ms. Hackworth.
It was not up. See, you did exactly what I said. I have two, two more seconds.
Next speaker. Next speaker, Celeste Wetzel.
If the three Republican members of council were women who happened to disagree with Chair Clancy, would Ms. Clancy cry sexism? Unlikely. Therefore, the most obvious conclusion is that Ms. Clancy simply does not like to be disagreed with, especially by three Republican males. So in the face of disagreement, she resorts to name-calling and falsely accusing her opponents of a variety of misdeeds, including sexism. These are becoming very worn-out tactics used to try to intimidate and silence those with whom one disagrees. If the chair of the council were male, the three Republicans would oppose the same objections and questions to the chair. After all, over many years, there's been strong disagreement between previous chairs and members of this council, and between council members, no matter the gender. Trash distancing was a particularly strong emotional issue between everyone on council. Comes now the female chair issuing sexism claims when the Republicans on council, who happened to be male, happened to disagree with the chair, which seemingly upset the chair's tender sensibilities because she didn't like their tone. One wonders if Ms. Clancy handles herself similarly in the outside business world. It seems she wants both power as chair, but also victimhood when someone from the opposite party disagrees with her. The three Republicans on this council have every right to voice their opposition, disagreements, opinions, even strongly at times, when they feel the chair is using power inappropriately and unreasonably. And Republicans on council have every right to support and defend their constituents and their districts, just as the Democrat members do, no matter the gender. But apparently, a little power is creating a dictator who wants to use her gender as a weapon to stifle debate and to promote victimhood. As a woman, it's tiresome hearing privileged women complaining because they want extra-special treatment in the business world, but who want to dictate not only what others say, but how it is said. Not only the thought police, but now the tone police. Most women I know can roam with the big dogs, not just the pups. What should, one should learn how to operate outside the sandbox, like the women before you did. Women's battles in the workplace were long ago fought on important issues and for equality, not for special tender treatment. We stood up for ourselves, held our ground, but without false accusations or demands for tender treatment. We could handle ourselves, thank you. But the new cliche seems to be, if you can't stand the heat, then accuse the oven of sexism. To paraphrase a recent article on office politics, "The most important aspects of navigating the working world is finding a place where you fit from a competence and value standpoint." Demonstrate credibility to distinguish yourself, but make sure your ego doesn't trick you into taking on things that might actually require more knowledge, development, or maturity than you might actually possess. We hope the chair will be able to demonstrate credible, distinguished, inclusive, mature, adult behavior.
Your time is up.
adult behavior, and tolerate diversity of opinion without resorting to false accusations." That seems to be the real issue here, not sexism.
Next speaker, Renee Aron.
Thank you for allowing me to talk. It is difficult for me to believe that the only three people the chair takes issue with are the three Republican males of the council. She takes issue with them for speaking out when they try to make inquiries, defend, and support their county council districts. These three councilmen have the same rights to offer their opinions and grievances as the same as any other elected official in this county. To make a false claim of sexism when they exercise their rights of representation shows that the lack of insight, knowledge, and inclusivity the chair has. That, to me, is sexism. In my experience, the job of a chair is to be a facilitator, not a dictator.
Next speaker is Zora Leggins.
For the record, I have been deprived my fundamental rights and discriminated against based on my race and sex under county executive page administration. Last week, I asked if there was a reason for the public forum text erased from the Journal of May 29, 2018. Chairman Clancy, do you have an answer for that?
I do not have an answer for that.
Oh, okay. I also request that the docket clerk in Division 35 come forth and explain her docket interest. I have received the audio from the February 13 meeting in which Judge Lauren Baker presided. I mentioned last week that there was no trial de novo, and I needed a full refund. At the trial de novo stage, all constitutional rights are in effect, the right to confront, cross-examine, and produce witnesses and evidence. Criminal investigation should be opened up to support the substantial and the procedural accuracy of the court's February 13 orders. Judge Lauren J. Baker has violated my rights by using his power to inflict bias. He has acted when he did not have jurisdiction to act. And in the United States courts, if a court is without authority, its judgments and orders are regarded as nullities. They are not warrantable, but simply void. Your handout is some of the transcribed texts from the February 13, 2020 meeting with Judge Baker. I hope after this council reviews this, you will see the need for stronger legislation to protect the unrepresented in the St. Louis County courts. When citizens come here, we come through security, so you guys can feel safe. What about the citizens? When we get in here, we should feel safe also. Judge Baker knowingly and improperly granting the February 13, 2020 order based upon perjury testimony, false pleadings rise to obstruction of justice by way of his orders and judicial misconduct. Mr. Page, the oppression demonstrated by Judge Lauren Baker, I believe, was sanctioned by your office. There was no trial de novo, no motions for sanctions, no motion to compel held on February 13 before Baker's court. Ms. O'Rourke is an attorney for St. Louis County, and the people of St. Louis County are her clients, not Mr. Edward McGee, a former employee in the prosecuting attorney's office impersonating an investigator, hindering prosecution at the taxpayer's expense. Dr. Page, if you are doing the right thing, Ms. O'Rourke's office would not resort to lies and trickery.
Your time is up. You need to wrap up, please.
Is this how you are going to bridge the racial divide? Because if it is, at the end of your tenure, you'll be on the wrong side of history. Thank you.
Final speaker, Kate Stratton.
Hi, I'm Kate Stratton. In regards to Prop P, I am very concerned about the leadership of this council and passing budgets without really knowing the budget. I would be out of business quickly if I spent money without knowing how much I had to spend. Reading articles about the council blaming everyone else is not what St. Louis County residents want to read. Madam Chair, I respectfully ask that, since you are in charge, take responsibility what has happened with this budget being passed and fix it. Thank you.
That concludes the public forum. Proceed with introduction of bills.
Bill number 65, introduced by Councilmember Daze, an ordinance declaring the public necessity of and providing for the opening, widening, and establishing of a section of public road designated as Jennings Station Road, lying wholly within the city of Jennings, St. Louis County, Missouri, directing the acquisition of real property therefore, and authorizing the county executive to execute contracts, agreements, and related documents, AR-1604. Bill number 66, introduced by Councilmember Dunaway, an ordinance declaring the public necessity of and providing for the opening, widening, and establishing of a section of public road designated as Dealman Road, lying within the cities of Olivet, the city of Oberlin, and unincorporated St. Louis County, Missouri, directing the acquisition of real property therefore, and authorizing the county executive to execute contracts, agreements, and related documents, AR-1554. Bill number 67, introduced by Councilmember Fitch, an ordinance declaring the public necessity of and providing for the opening, widening, and establishing of a section of public road designated as Ballast Road, lying wholly within the cities of Perkwood and DePere, St. Louis County, Missouri, directing the acquisition of real property therefore, and authorizing the county executive to execute contracts, agreements, and related documents, Bill number 68, introduced by Councilmember Clancy, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a contract with the Salvation Army for operation of a warming shelter and a cooling shelter. Bill number 69, introduced by Councilmember Dunaway, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a contract with Gloss LLC for lease of space at County Police Precinct at 1333 Ashby Road. Bill number 70, introduced by Councilmember Clancy, an ordinance amending Chapter 602, Title VI, St. Louis County Revised Ordinances 1974 as amended, Public Health, by enacting and adding a new section pertaining to the authority of the Director of the Department of Public Health to contract for substitute veterinary services. Bill number 71, introduced by Councilmembers Walton, Gray, and Tracus, an ordinance amending Title XII, St. Louis County Revised Ordinances 1974 as amended, Traffic Code, by enacting and adding two new provisions to Schedule VI. Bill number 72, introduced by Councilmember Clancy, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute an amendment to the collective bargaining agreement pertaining to certain job classifications within the police department's crime lavatory. Bill number 73, introduced by Councilmember Clancy, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a collective bargaining agreement with the St. Louis County Police Association, Fraternal Order of Police Lodge 111, for certain professional staff of the St. Louis County Police Department. Madam Chair, that is all the bills.
We will move on to perfection.
Bill number 20, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
Please hold.
Bill number 20 is held.
Substitute Bill number one for Bill number 385, introduced by Councilmember Dunaway.
Please hold. Substitute Bill number one for Bill number 385 is held.
Bill number five, introduced by Councilmembers Fitch, Tracus, and Harder.
Bill number five is the bill that would allow the voters of St. Louis County to decide on whether or not they want red lights, speed cameras in St. Louis County. I know last week, Councilwoman Chair, Council Chair, did not have a chance to book a committee of the whole, and I haven't had a chance to talk to you. Is there any movement on that?
We are looking at dates still, and we will continue to be in contact with your office about that.
Can I at least ask for a minimum of two weeks' notice?
Yes. I understand that you've got people you want to come, and I know you have a busy work schedule. I think that is a reasonable request.
Thank you. I move to hold Bill number five.
Bill number five is held.
Bill number 32, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
Please hold Bill number 32.
Bill number 32 is held.
Bill number 36, introduced by Councilmember Fitch.
I move to hold Bill 36.
Bill number 36 is held.
Bill number 57, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to perfect Bill number 57.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 57 is perfected.
Bill number 58, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to perfect Bill number 58.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 58 is perfected.
Bill number 59, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to perfect Bill number 59.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 59 is perfected.
Bill number 60, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to perfect Bill number 60.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 60 is perfected.
Bill number 61, introduced by Councilmember Walton Gray.
I move to perfect Bill number 61.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 61 is perfected.
Bill number 62, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to perfect Bill number 62.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 62 is perfected.
Bill number 63, introduced by Councilmember Fitch.
I move to perfect Bill number 63.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 63 is perfected.
Bill number 64, introduced by Councilmember Dunaway.
I move to perfect Bill number 64.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 64 is perfected. Moving on to final passage.
Bill number 320, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to hold Bill number 320. Bill number 320 is held.
Bill number 14, introduced by Councilmembers Tracus, Daze, Dunaway, Fitch, Walton Gray, Clancy, and Harder.
Please hold Bill number 14.
Bill number 14 is held.
Bill number 43, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move for final passage of Bill number 43.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Daze.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Uh, no.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill number 43, there are six ayes and one no.
Bill number 43 is finally passed.
Bill number 45, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move for final passage of Bill number 45.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Daze.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill number 45, you have seven ayes.
Bill number 45 is finally passed.
Bill number 46, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move for final passage of Bill number 46.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Daze.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill number 46, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 46 is finally passed.
Bill number 47, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
I move for final passage of Bill number 47. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Daze.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill number 47, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 47 is finally passed.
Bill number 48, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move for final passage of Bill number 48.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Daze.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill number 48, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 48 is finally passed.
Bill number 49, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
We will drop from the order of business.
Aye.
Bill number 50, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move for final passage of Bill number 50.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Daze.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill number 50, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 50 is finally passed.
Bill number 51, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move for final passage of Bill number 51.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Daze.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill number 51, you have seven ayes.
Bill number 51 is finally passed.
Bill number 52, introduced by Councilmember Dunaway.
I move for final passage of Bill number 52.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Daze.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill number 52, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 52 is finally passed.
Bill number 53, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
Move for final passage of Bill number 53, please.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Daze.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Abstain.
Madam Chair, on Bill number 53, you have six ayes and one abstain.
Bill number 53 is finally passed.
Bill number 54, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
Move for final passage of Bill number 54, please. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Daze.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Abstain.
Madam Chair, on Bill number 54, there are six ayes and one abstain.
Bill number 54 is finally passed.
Bill number 55, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move for final passage of Bill number 55.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Daze.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
No.
Councilmember Harder. Madam Chair, on bill number 55, there are six ayes and one no.
Bill number 55 is finally passed.
Bill number 56, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
I move for final passage of bill number 56. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Daze.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on bill number 56, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 56 is finally passed. We will move on to resolutions.
Madam Chair, we have 11 resolutions this evening. Uh, resolutions number one through 10, introduced by Councilmember Daze.
I move for the adoption of resolutions numbers one through 10.
Is there a second? Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Daze.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on resolutions one through 10, there are seven ayes.
Resolutions, motion carries, resolutions, um, one through 10 are adopted.
Resolution number 11, introduced by Councilmembers Walton, Gray, Daze, Dunaway, Fitch, and Clancy.
Could you read the first and last paragraph, please? Or the resolve, please?
Say that again, I'm sorry.
The first paragraph and then the resolve.
Good. Resolution number 11, introduced by Councilmembers Walton, Gray, Daze, Dunaway, Fitch, and Clancy, a resolution, whereas colorectal cancer is the third most commonly diagnosed cancer and the second leading cause of cancer death in men and women combined in the United States. Now therefore, be it resolved by the county council of St. Louis County, Missouri, as follows. The county council encourages everyone in St. Louis County to observe National Colorectal Cancer Awareness Month throughout March to increase awareness of colorectal cancer risk factors, prevention, and risk reduction, and especially to observe Dress in Blue Day on Friday, March 6, 2020, as a show of support for efforts to end colorectal cancer.
And also, I'd like to thank the council for, we decided to dress in blue today because we won't be here on Friday, most likely. So, I appreciate the council, um, dressing in blue today and bringing the, to the forefront, at least for today, the issues with colon cancer and how easy it is to detect if you simply have your test at the appropriate age and thereafter. So, with that, I move for the adoption of resolution number 11.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Daze.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on resolution 11, there are seven ayes.
Motion carries, resolution number 11 is adopted.
Moving on to unfinished business, item number one.
Um, I move for the appointment to be approved as recommended.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.